It's a log to eat with this bite. It's by strawberry sorcery chicken.
Hey, everybody. Welcome to the July meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Shout out, I said it. Welcome to our annual town meeting for the Rose Point Farms City Council. Uh, welcome. Please rise and recite the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold call, Mr. Speaker.
Councilmember what?
Here.
Councilmember Conroy, over there.
Here.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Here.
Mayor Daras.
Yep.
Councilmember Donovan.
Here.
Councilmember Soroka.
Here.
Mayor Brotem, over there.
Here.
Item three, reading consideration of the minutes of our meeting held on March thirteenth. Any comments or changes to those minutes? Very none will be approved or submitted. Item four, we are glad to have with us tonight Wayne County Sheriff of Bell Washington. Sheriff Washington, come up to the podium, introduce yourself. I'd love to hear from you. Thank you for having me tonight.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everybody.
Uh, talented honor, personal service, David, for you all. Uh, Rose Point Farms, introducing myself to you, let you know we got going. Very grateful to Wayne County Sheriff's Office. So, uh, thank you, and council members, and my friend Sierra. Uh, we've worked together in the park for many years. On top of her.
I've never seen her.
We work together. Thank you, Paul Martin, for setting these up for me. I've been out here in Rose Point, uh, chief of the center, my good friend Dan Jensen, former chief. I, um, I'm rep. your Washington. I've been in this house since, uh, as a sheriff since, uh, January twenty-one. Uh, most of you probably know how I got here through, uh, unfortunately, my good friend, that drove me to the podium. And fortunate enough to get appointed to succeed him. Then we were very fortunate last year to overwhelmingly receive both, uh, Wayne County residents to retain that seat and I am the county legislature of Wayne County. So what we're doing out in Wayne County in the sheriff's office is, uh, offering our services to you. We go around various cities, uh, in Wayne County, townships, you know, everyone is free, uh, the county sheriff and their agencies, law enforcement, whatever that's about, but we're trying hard to get people interested, back into in law enforcement. So those, uh, agencies, small agencies that need some assistance, we just want to be out here and let you know that we're here because Wayne County Sheriff's Office to assist you. Uh, you know, everybody wants to be able to serve their community, uh, in the summertime, especially if they have festivals or parades and things like that to go on. We want to let you know that real big, if you need courts, if you need some traffic control, you want to need, you need some people to just come out and law enforcement help, that's what we do. And we don't want you to hesitate calling on us. Uh, we, as you know, the major, the major things that we have to do in Wayne County is law enforcement, as sheriff's office, county courts, parks and jails. But, uh, had kind of come here from Detroit, uh, Detroit police department, twenty-five years. I could not imagine being sheriff and not being able to be about the community as well. I'm all about the community. I say a lot of sales, that's what we do in court every, or even city township in Wayne County has a police department. So we don't deny any one call as necessary, but, uh, I could imagine not still being about the community. So that's when I, and I, and, and go around and I introduce myself, I always want to let you all know that I'm here for you and, and, and Rose Point Farms. Whatever else we need to assist, you know, I always say that the stronger is law enforcement together. We work together. And that's what I want to do as long as I'm the Wayne County Sheriff, I'm going to be here, uh, for a while. Uh, as long as we're citizens of Wayne County, I think that's it. And I'm going to be working hard, but no, I will be working hard for you, for you all at Rose Point Farms. So, uh, don't want to take up a lot of time, you know, we're building a new jail, we're excited about that. Uh, we're excited about the things that we, uh, county executives have helped us make this week with our recruiting efforts. I brought one of my recruiters here with me. I just wanted to say a few words that began, uh, about what we're doing in the, uh, uh, sheriff's office as it relates to our recruiting. Uh, we're not here to try to recruit any of your officers as they do than us all the time. Uh, uh, I do want him to say something about the efforts that, that are going for, uh, county executives, making sure we're now compatible with, uh, some of the, uh, other agencies that have historically paid their officers more than, uh, obviously sheriff's office has. Uh, I mean, we're going to be active at Rose Point Farms, uh, but we're working hard to, uh, get to that point where people want to be in our agency and, you know, the young people now, they, they, they want to know that they, if you didn't want to know what we were sheriff's office, we were concerned about how much money you get paid, how much, uh, uh, when are the, when are our off days and they, when do, how many vacations they, we just want to be, we want to see hope. Try to get people, young people, interested and back into serving and protect the community, especially the community they live in. So, uh, David Felt, if you could come up right quick, um, talk about our recruiting efforts and, and I thank you all very much for the time, uh, that you've given me to be out here and introduce myself and just let you know that Wayne County Sheriff's Office is here for. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, very grateful. My name is David Felt. I've been proven away from the sheriff's office. The sheriff pretty much just gave his spiel about what we're looking for. So definitely not to be redundant, we are hiring. Uh, we do offer, uh, a, a compatible rate wage at this particular time, you know, for law enforcement across the country. It's hard to find people to, to work and, and to, uh, retain those people who are working hard to make sure we have a culture, the climate and environment that's conducive to having people there who want to be part of law enforcement. So again, if you know somebody that might be interested, they go to our website. Uh, I'm going to leave some flyers out here and, uh, he, he pretty much said everything we need to say. And again, it's good to be here. We got young people sitting at home, I know anybody that's sitting at home that, you know, might be in between things and come think about it and make about sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year.
And that's great.
And they, they can come do that. So again, it's right up to the spring, spring board people in law enforcement. Um, prior to coming here, I had, uh, relationships and contracts with Department of Justice. A lot of you were prisons and were able to work in different areas. So again, a lot of times there's a, 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 a like a lore thought about it, but by trying to get it together, come be, come be a productive citizen. And, uh, be a part of the resolution to change the narrative of law enforcement. Thank you for the time.
Thank you both. Thanks, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
If you could approach your podium again. Um, I just wanted everyone to know how we met and it was during my days at ATF. And one of the things that stood out about you for me was I was a young agent and the way you embraced me um, was truly remarkable. Your, you were running a narcotics enforcement unit and we were working big investigations. Your integrity, your exemplary leadership skills, dependability in your openness. Um, you said it right. Partnerships with law enforcement are so important. So I hope this will be the last time that we get to see you and congratulations, Mike.
Thank you so much. I'll be here for you, Ken. You can be all that's up.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Ken, can you just apply to? All right. Item five, one of my bigger parts of this job is recognizing citizens in our community who have contributed to public safety in many ways. And today, uh, I'd like to have, uh, John Hutchins take the podium. I think, or, uh, John is going to do it, right, Director? And we're going to commend Ed Russell for his great service to our community. Ed, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Andy and I wanted to recognize Ed tonight for all the time he has. He's dedicated in the last year and change to securing donations to fund the ongoing K nine program. Among many other things, that has worked in and for the community for decades. So we thought it was appropriate, we acknowledge him with a community service award. So if you'll indulge me for a minute, we put together a little certificate and we have a little commemorative, uh, we want to present to Ed this evening. And, uh, just give me a couple of minutes here. As a lifelong resident of Rose Point, Ed Russell has been a fundamental element of community enhancement through not only commercial and residential real estate, but numerous civic charitable and philanthropic endeavors. His pursuit of the betterment of all things as a family man, businessman, and trustee of countless organizations, including children's charities, hospitals, financial institutions, and community programs, reflects a quality that's summarized in one short sentence. Ed gets things done. In two thousand and twenty-two, with the impending retirement of Duke on the horizon, we began discussions around the possibility of funding another K nine program. It is our firm belief that the Rose Point Farms K nine division enhances the relationship between the Public Safety Department and our surrounding communities. We approached Ed for his assistance in gauging community interest and a new K nine donations program. True to form, he spearheaded the effort, applying his knowledge and experience and philanthropic interests to secure funding from local benefactors and set up Rose Point K nine fund to the Rose Point more than ever. The fund accepts charitable donations to support the new program as well as potential programs in the future. To date, Ed's tireless efforts have resulted in quarter million dollars in donation commitments to the program. In addition, during the final, uh, months of two thousand and twenty-two, Ed stepped up to oversee improvements to the Rose Point Farms Fire Hall of Dormitory project. With an extremely narrow timeline and limited budget, his team quickly remodeled the fire division living quarters, making upgrades and enhancements to better accommodate personnel. Project was welcomed and appreciated by our twenty-four hour staff as the first upgrade to their living quarters in over sixty years. Tonight, we present Ed with the Rose Point Farms Public Safety Community Service Award. His term of spirit, abundant energy, and willingness to take the reins in the pursuit of the betterment of all things is truly commendable.
Yes.
Now turn left. Turn left.
Andy, you want to say anything? Thank, I'll look, we'll say, thank you, thank you. Great help, thanks. Well, this is awfully nice, uh, I'd expect it. When Hutchins and Shane asked me about the opportunity to, uh, get involved with the K nine operation in that project, I thought that, uh, you know, our past benefactor that has since passed away, uh, was, uh, has done her part. And I thought, why not recruit a new group of residents that love the city and would want to be involved? I'm honored that, uh, that I could, uh, call a few friends and immediately buy in. I want to thank the War Memorial for hosting the, uh, little cocktail party that they did to share the vision of the K nine project. Been a great turnout and, uh, it really worked out to be a great community friend raiser and create awareness, uh, for this project. So, uh, I was just the guy on the phone. There, there are known of our esteemed residents that stepped up and, uh, and wrote the checks. And I think we, we sent a check, uh, a few weeks back for around eighty, change, eighty-five thousand, something like that. And I got another fifty today. So, uh, good work. We're, we're, we're past halfway on the five-year plan. So, uh, not, not bad for, uh, four months of work. So anyway, honored to be a part of this. Thank you for this wonderful, uh, award. And it's an honor to accept it. Thanks very much.
All right. Item six, site plan reviewed for permission to construct a seasonal dining platform in the public right of way at one, two, three Churchill's store. You guys approach the podium, please, and present your case. Give us your name and address, please.
Terry, fine store, um, over, works fine.
Could you move the microphone?
Move the call. Yes, thank you.
I'm hoping to want you to talk about, uh, adding, uh, a eight by forty-one inch downtown street for user value, uh, hours of operation. And it's going to be constructed with, um, prep and lawn iron ready to go around it. And we're going to reconfigure the patio that's currently there, moving away from the buildings or three at the sidewalk. The little ones, people walking, looking like, yeah, well, this one's going to be curved and, uh, curvy meters. And we're going to clean that up, decorate it, take a, uh, I mean, which are exactly what, something that's going to be on the very end of it, coming up vertical, southern mile that would block that area for the case of any accident, or something that had a power lock, a rattle on it or something in one of that that goes that off or is reflective lights, but people don't know, you know, notice it. Change some springy lights and, well, not probably because of the same scene we had, maybe a couple more tables than we used to have. And then spread out one.
All right. Any questions, Councilor? All right, Neil first?
Yeah, I noticed that the plan, um, calls right now for an eight-foot, um, platform width. Would you be comfortable making that six foot just to maintain consistency across all of the other restaurants that have a platform on them?
Sure.
Yeah, it's, it, I know in particular, we want to have six feet so that that gives two additional feet for safety purposes, and that's been the case with the other ones as well, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, and then I just wanted to main, uh, make sure that you were committed to maintaining your, your site plan. You talked about a six-foot clear walkway between the building and the proposed act of seating. That's great. I think as someone who's pushed a stroller around, uh, the hills, uh, uh, that area, that would be a very much improvement. Um, and the other question I had was, it just made the question for the administration, Eric. So we're losing one parking space, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So the, this is, but this is also a forty-one foot, um, uh, space. So what's worth noting is that we're only losing one space. In the other case, when we had a forty-one foot at the, um, Jazz Cafe, that was two spaces. And so that meant that we were asking two hundred and forty dollars per month. In this case, we're only losing one parking space. You know, so originally I, I wrote a draft of, of draft motion potentially where I talked about one hundred and eighty versus two forty. The question is, how do we want to adequately deal with this?
I think that they'll refund two forty. Although we're losing one space, uh, they're actually utilizing what would be two spaces. Uh, currently there is a, a, a blocked off space, uh, that had been previously approved for valet.
Yeah.
And so that would, in essence, you know, they will, they will be occupying two, two spaces. Although currently one of those two spaces is not occupiable.
Yeah, and that, that, from a, from an equity standpoint across the other businesses, that makes sense too, because we looked at, I, I was looking at Caponee and some other places when we had this, it was, uh, you know, they were dealing with twenty-two feet versus forty-one feet.
Right, right. We did one space for Caponee.
I think those are all my questions.
Sir? I don't have any. Thank you.
Uh, Lev?
Uh, yeah, uh, it's been a question about, um, the area that you're going to be using that is currently no parking. Says, says no parking, it's, it's parking is prohibited in that area close by to the driveway that goes underneath the building. Um, it, uh, is there, I guess maybe this is for, uh, for, for, for administration, but I'm, I'm a bit concerned about people driving down, uh, Churchill and then taking a right into the, uh, parking that park into that, uh, go right into that driveway and then possibly missing it and hitting your, hitting your, um, your platform. So our, and I'm looking at the, uh, the drawings here and I, I, um, maybe I'm not seeing it. I see you have an existing planter at the, um, I'm going to call it the south side or the other side of the, of the platform, but nothing up at the, um, area where people might be essentially driving into your, into the platform. So I'm just wondering, what can we do if there's anything to be done to, for pedestrian safety purposes and for the dining, diners perspective?
We're just beginning. We, we're going to put a barricade there, flowers with gravel or something that would separate that. So it's, God forbid something happen, it would be, that's me first and put some, you know, reflection stickers on it so that people won't see that.
All right. And you're, you'd be willing to, as a condition to our motion, make that, uh, you'd be willing to, uh, work with, with staff, with public safety to ensure that that would.
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, I've heard what you're establishing many times and I've enjoyed it very much. But one of the things outside is really, uh, reflecting to me are your torches. Um, probably will come close with those torches. Do you intend to continue that this, this season? And will you be adding additional torches?
No, that was a best plan. Those are going to be all torches. We're going to, we're going to light it with some spring lights.
And is, is there a way that we could get maybe a little bit more detailed, um, perspective on, on the lighting and what you propose to do as far as, you know, the planters and such for the safety things? Because I don't see anything in my materials if I had, I'm not a mess on this, but I don't see anything in that that really details this out.
The lighting would be spring lights in the building, back and forth, you know, the kind of C shape going from the building to the patio, building to patio, building to patio. As far as the, you are going to conduct it with planters on the one side of the driveway and on the other side too. You know, we don't want to cart back and out of it either. And then, you know, we, if you don't want to swap, we kind of, we kind of kind of lighten up on the flowers, try to be, but, you know, put flowers, try to make an exact.
And, and, and I think that, I think that sounds wonderful, but just again, with the councilman, Joe, this point, just for continuity on what we required from the other applicants who had outdoor dining, perhaps a little bit more detail would be in order.
So, hold on, I have a question.
Yeah, mine.
Joe, any questions?
I have issues with the, uh, forty-one feet. It's, you know, two parking spots, not one. Um, I have real issues with the, uh, the blind curb coming down Churchill. Reflective tape and gravel in a box is not, didn't stop the guy who ran the, uh, Mr. Turner at Churchill or at East Warren and Matt Abbott ran to, to the post office. So I just, I know monkey see, monkey do, one's got it, I want it too. But, you know, there's plenty of seating in your restaurant, you have it downstairs and I just think it's, it's unnecessary. So I have a, and I have a real issue with safety. That's all.
John, you got a question? Or any questions, John?
I'm in favor of the project. A little more detailed drawings, if you would. I mean, safety is the key, as you indicated at the beginning of your remarks. Good firm barricades on either side of the dining platform. I don't have an issue with, as suggested by council member Ritchie, uh, with regard to, uh, the overall space. I think it's consistent with that. It's being done in our community and other communities. I keep up the good work and maintain a very good, clean establishment that's owned by one of our residents who, uh, does a lot for our community, not only with regard to your restaurant, but I suggest in other matters as well. We've heard about some, like.
So, I don't know if, if council heard you say that whatever you need to do, whatever we request of you, if you could just restate that again for the record.
You know, I think I had a conversation with Ken regarding like putting even that cement there. It, to me, it would be ugly looking, but it would be safe. I'm not sure what those costs are, but if you don't know, I don't know.
Yes.
Like highway, I don't know, I don't know how we move it in the winter. I don't think it's something people used to do. No, you, you come up with what I need to do and I'm sure we can follow.
Thank you.
Lev?
Yes, I'm sorry. I forgot this item. Uh, in our planners', um, review, recommendation number three, uh, they are asking for details regarding intended materials and finishes for the deck, fencing in any additional barriers. In addition to that, there's apparently a manhole that's going to be beneath your, your deck there. So that, um, drawing should include, uh, some way of accessing that in case, you know, the public safety or if somebody needs to get down there quickly, the water department, right? So we need to have those details. Is that up here with you? Does that sound, sound good?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Got that?
Yeah, I already had that in there. I can ask them.
Couple of quick questions. Um, are you still going to offer valet? And if so, how do you plan on doing it with using that spot?
No, we haven't done that way.
Okay. And then, um, so why the move? Because you're fully giving one or two tables and you haven't answered already why you want the platform.
I don't think it's going to be one or two, probably be four, but because you, if you finish before they have three, four tops and two rounds, a bunch of little tables that you can't push. So we would take away some of the little tables, put a bigger table in there. And, you know, I don't think it's going to be more than thirty seats. I, I don't really know exactly, I have a little furniture to it, but, you know, we have four rectangular tables that bring over to another restaurant, um, plus way too many to place downtown instead. So we have four tables, that's four, four tops. Look at the tables that we inherited from the restaurant. But I use all those. I would say that you're going to not game, we're probably going to get the most thirty, I think we get twenty-four before.
Well, I think, I've sat at the, I've sat at the two tops outside. You're right, you're small, so you're going to just create a better experience. I mean, a slightly bigger table for everybody at two tops.
The wide way is the problem. You can't, you know, you're blocking a walkway that, like I said, you can't get around.
Sure. So what I'm going to suggest is that you have, uh, your builder, pull the designs that the other, uh, two restaurants that had these. Because I think the second one was Nini. They just literally took the design from Locks and used it for theirs to create a continuity of look and appearance and material. Um, so I would try to do as close to that as possible because it is, you know, we don't want it to look that different. You can actually do some tweaks and relays and all that. You can actually do some tweaks and relays and all that, I get it. But just, it's easier on our department to look at the strength of items and the materials and the wherewithal. And particularly the planners, because I know when Lux came the first time, they put planners up, that my bicycle couldn't run over. So you really got to take a look at what you're doing with that area. Shane, I've got a question. The driveway is right before that space that opens after the last line of the ride and the curb. So what's going on with that building? What did the owner say about the usage of the driveway and stuff?
So currently, there was a one, previously it was a one-way in driveway for the bank that was previously located at one thirty-one Churchill. That has since been barricaded. There is a barricade there. I've actually reached out to cottage. I'm waiting to hear response with the long-term plan. It's, but frankly, one of my hopes is that, that use that was previously conditioned on, on the bank is, is no longer needed. When we repaid Churchill, we'd like to see that closed off and that, that approach eliminated, which would gain that parking space, parking space back along Churchill. And just another, just, you know, comment, and just echo Mayor's and some of the other council members' comments in terms of, you know, the materials used. We've been consistent with all the other three restaurants that have outdoor dining, so we can provide that. And I think you've already provided.
Pardon?
The material of the, the platform itself. I think you've already provided some information to Public Service Director that, again, the railing style and everything mimics what, what's been done elsewhere. And then obviously, final plans are subject to review of public safety, particularly as it relates to the barricade issue on either end for safety purposes.
Anybody else on council have any questions for the applicants? All right, John, once you have seen what public comment and questions next. So anybody else, anybody from the public like to raise some issues? Please come up, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Edward Jeffries. I live in Park, available in the building right over Churchill, which is next to Capone. I'd like to reiterate the letter which I sent to the council earlier, which goes showing opposing this measure. I think that the, during the pandemic, everything we could do to help the restaurants survive, including this, I think we're a wonderful answer with that. But that time is now packed, as has the need for this. The, as opposed to the need for parking. I think the need for parking is English, the people being more out, about. And my experience with my friends and myself, there isn't convenient parking as your people. There's no, and I think that businesses, mine included, suffer because of it. I don't think it's fair for the council to pick one group of businesses to favor as opposed to the rest of the hit one block. I think that the use of parking for restaurants and that's what I think is currently, I think, six spaces that are, they're taken up. Now your proposal to one, that'll be eight. I only think there's, there's less than thirty on, on both sides of the block. That's about a third of parking. I don't think that's fair to, to people who live there, work there, pay taxes. It's a little bit disturbing. The, um, the other thing is that the spaces that they're, as they're given up, they've given up twenty-four seven. In Inklon weather or when the restaurants close, nobody else can use that space. Nobody. It's, but again, it, the restaurants are getting something, the restaurants are. Also, at least in my experience walking in the dining in the hills, that there's plenty of room on the sidewalk for dining outside. The addition of moving out to the street, I think is unnecessary. There's plenty of room in the bronze door, on the bronze door, in the basement as well, for people to dine. And I, I don't think it's necessary, just having sat here talking for a while with the driveway naturally, talking to people on the floor for their, other dining underneath with the driveways. That wouldn't cause anybody any problems. Finally, I think that if the council sees fit to grant this motion, I would hope that they would help ameliorate the situation by creating new parking across the street where the Morgan Stanley people are. You got my, my letter, there's a picture on the back and there's a, that area doesn't have no parking at any time. Commercial vehicles loading zone. What commercial vehicle loads a bank years ago? That used to be a Lincoln Neviser. Okay, they've unloaded their cars. They need a lot of space. Again, that's something else that's come and gone. And that's basis. Been empty for a long time and this bank will be used to prefer. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Johnson?
David?
Dan Johnson, three, three, six Kirby Road. Broadstore or the hills was formerly known as Cornerstone Hill. I don't know how you can say it's okay for the restaurants in the middle of the hill to have their platforms, but not Broadstore, Cornerstone Hill. I do agree, Shane and I spoke in our previous position about eliminating that yellow parking over in front of Morgan Stanley. Except that wasn't just for the car dealership that was there because when the furniture store was there, they needed it for the eighteen liers to load there. So we will pick those spots up. I bet, bring John and Shane, I think we picked the spots up anyway. As far as Inklon weather, it's only up for a few months, whatever it might be. It really adds to the ambiance of the hill. We're always trying to compete with the village, with all their ups and downs or whatever. Because of, of the way the hill is structured with businesses and first floor and second floors, I think we need to give them every opportunity to expand and what they can get done in the, in the months that are summer months. I think if it's done properly, whether it's a cement barrier, they can be decorated accordingly, the way the other cities have done it. I think we can provide a safety, Joe, I really do. I think we provide a safety. You know, anytime you put parking in the, or, or tables in the street, there's an inherent risk, yes. But many communities around, around the state, probably around the country, have done it successfully. We can't guard against everything. We'll do the best we can. And I think the goal here is to make the hill a more viable place to go in the summertime, you know, spring, summer, fall, to have a great place to dine and, and be outside. So I think it can be done safely. I think John, public safety can handle it as far as safety goes. I'm not in favor, because I wouldn't want to sit at tables in the drive through the old bank. That's what it was there for. It, it just doesn't work. So whatever they put in there, it's going to go to them. Whatever, always have to go in our, I think it's a great idea. I think it adds to the ambiance of the hill. And I'm all for it as a, as a resident in the past, public safety, I think the public safety issue should be addressed properly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? See, nobody else. Public comment is closed. What is the pleasure of council?
Louis, can I?
Sure.
Can I make a brief comment to more or less rebut the issue of, of taking away the, the parking space across the street? Any number of times that I've walked up onto the hill, I have seen commercial vehicles at that location. What comes to mind is this company called Iron Mountain. I think that's what they do. They take documents and they shred stuff. Also, the UPS, the delivery services, and when instruction has been going on at the, uh, at the, yeah.
Which bookstore?
The bookstore, yes.
I'm sorry, the bookstore.
The bookstore. Oh, well, and also when the library was coming in, there were, that I can't recall seeing yet. But my point is, we need that space, I think, for the, for the, for the commercial books on, right on, on the hill. I don't believe that we should, as Mr. Jeffries is saying, we should take that away. Plus, we have the MO lot, which in the evenings, you know, I don't know all the details about how vacant or, or full they are, but I've got to say that the MO lot is probably pretty convenient. And beyond that, I've entered the hill restaurant, or now the Bronze Door, from the backside, from the MO lot anyways. So, I mean, if you're looking for parking, it doesn't hurt to, to be in the back, in the back there. So I hope that, that, as Dan is saying, that staff and Hutch is looking at that. Oh, there's also another issue. If you've got people parking in that currently no parking zone, you're on Hill Place and you're looking down and trying to go left onto Churchill to go south. You can't see down there. There's a site problem because those cars are stacked up right there, part mixed to the curb. And I could just see that that would become a, a potential hazard. So I, I'd say keep it the way it is.
It's not part of the motion or part of consideration tonight, so we can, take another advice.
I'm thinking that is a, you know.
But I got you.
Mr. Fair, I just wanted to address what the residents had said about the, there's plenty of room to eat inside and so forth and so on. And they went along this, this trail of having these different outdoor facilities and expanding them into the street during the pandemic to try to increase the restaurant service in our, in our community on the, on the hill. We recently have been getting a lot of input into a master plan in the city. And we've got a lot of feedback from a lot of residents, particularly with the hill and what they want to see from the hill. And while I might have been in agreement previously that I think that, you know, we start this, we're going to have to have every restaurant. Are we really not, you know, changing the constellation of, of the parking and some different logistical manners for the hill? Now, having been part of this process for the master planning and having a lot of community input, I'm convinced that this is what we need to do with the hill. We do, we need to have more of an entertainment, more of a recreational part. I do think we still have to preserve some of the different services to a number of different establishments that are not restaurants. I will take issue with the, well, council person realizes this is not part of the motion, but every time I go by those commercial lots, these, these commercial parking spaces, there is no one in it. No one in it, every time. So, and I'm on the hill, it's just frequently, it's going to be, and you are. So maybe I'm just going there, it's a different all the time, there's not a service. But particularly at night, you're not going to have any commercial vehicles that are going to be loaded and unloaded. And that's when you need some of those spots. So I would be voting in favor of this project with the understanding that we would have more details that we may be able to counsel as far as the planters and stuff, people are anticipating, asked us. Thank you.
Great.
Yeah. And the good news is, we're going to be dealing with the parking lots a little bit later. So we'll be able to talk about the MO lot, how it's going to be easier, we'll get in there. Before I put forward a motion, I'll just add too, I think, one way of also looking at this and the way that I think about it is I, I acknowledge that we made the decision to kind of allow restaurants to have this, this curbside space during the pandemic. And frankly, this is one of the few silver linings that came out of that very dark cloud of the pandemic, which is a much more vibrant community core. I think having folks out on the street makes it seem welcome and exciting and a place to be and is great for our residents and great for the community at large. So I, I appreciate it. I think we're going to explore some other ways to make sure that we recruit some of the parking lost by these spots in the future. And that said, I'd like to note motion that the city council approved the site plans submitted on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three by John McCarry on behalf of Battalion of Real Estate LLC for the construction of, construction and sighting of a removable deck to effectively expand the sidewalk and increase seasonal patio seating capacity for the property located at one, two, three Churchill, known as Bronze Door. To reach this decision, we have reviewed Matt Bakke's memo dated April third, twenty twenty-three, the applicant's site plan review application dated March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, and a detailed review letter from McKenna dated March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and the applicant's comments tonight. Approval of the site plan is subject to the following conditions. And I'll note that these conditions were pulled directly from what we gave Capone last year to kind of increase equity, along with some additions from suggestions from the administration. So those, those conditions are as follows. One, the applicant provides details of the planters, wheel stops, and other appropriate areas that are proposed around the platform to the satisfaction of city public safety officials. Two, the applicant provides the width of the platform to six feet, maintaining consistency across similar removable decks utilizing the hill business district. Three, the applicant commits to maintaining the six-foot clear walkway between the building and the proposed outdoor seating provided for comfortable pedestrian ambulation, including access for strollers and wheelchairs on the sidewalk. The applicant, or the applicant agrees to construct the platform with similar materials and specifications as, as other approved platforms on the hill, plans will be reviewed to the satisfaction of city public safety officials. Five, the applicant provides a detailed drawing of the transition between the proposed platform and the existing curb, ensuring that the platform is accessible to all patrons and does not present any tripping hazards and, if necessary, provisions for the access of the existing manhole. If exterior lights or heating elements are included on a platform, the types and location should be called out and approved by the city prior to installation. Seven, the applicant will enter into an outdoor cafe license agreement with the city, which will include the duration of seasonal setup, additional for annual renewal, insurance requirements, and layout. And finally, eight, the lease rate established in this agreement will be set at two hundred and forty dollars per month. This is necessary to make up for the meter revenue that will be lost from metered spaces being eliminated.
Got a motion? Yeah. Do I support, support? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Faziki.
Councilmember Wood.
Right.
Councilmember Camry of Wolvergate.
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie.
No.
Mayor Theros.
Yes.
Councilmember Donovan.
Yeah.
Councilmember Soroka.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tempul.
Yes. Motion carries. As you know, we made the Churchill, so your timing of implementation, you'll have to talk to Mr. Bakke. Find out when you can start construction. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the, the council at the Medina's Board of Zoning Appeals. Support, or if all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seven, Board of Zoning Appeals. Consideration of request for dimensional bearings to commit the construction of a new home at three hundred Maross to the applicant and their representatives, please approach the podium.
Good evening. I'm Michael Gordon from Boise, Gordon Associate Architects, Board three, five, one, Delaware Court, Orlando. With me, Ted, from the backend of Metropolis. We will be addressing the concerns and what we're talking about today. We have two issues in force. First is the width of the lot. As we know, the minimum zoning requirement is for a hundred and fifty-foot lot. This last question is like a hundred and forty feet. So any developments would require your approval. The second, by ordinance, the home is allowed to have one attached garage, but four gates. This being a car culture and homeowner being a car enthusiast, which will explain. He wants to deserve, he allowed four cars. Instead of having one garage, like have two, two-car garages on either side of the home. First, the lap width, and a ten-foot differential from what is allowed. And the lot is larger than the, the generous building envelope, the footprint of the home, their client, everything they want for a large extended family, which includes many of their children who live in the points.
Just, I would go straight to the garages.
Okay. Well, I'm always, the lap coverage, even with everything we're doing, is only seventeen percent. And the lot is just sixty percent efficient. The next request is to allow the site to have two garages. We did a study here. We looked at every possible option of having the four tires, including the garage doors facing the side, facing the court. On one side, we're all facing forward to the street, which I think we all agree would be reasonable. So we came up with this design, which is, they also wanted a very symmetric formal house. So we did a very classic, and we lived in a lot of houses in Rose Point. And we've got a lot of houses in Rose Point. We are familiar with the architecture of the area. We deal with the massing, and there was one question about, what we're talking about with the massing, you can see where the lot and the other houses are here. That four-car garage really prowls way out in front of the house. We just felt it just kept a nice shoulder to the neighbors. That's why we wanted, further, the clients decided to store a classic car, and she's going to explain with another illustration. to store a classic car in secret. She's going to explain um with another illustration. And this is, I also relieve the pressure on side streets. I've been on the nest of the loss, but there's limited parking. And I think especially in that, since I've been to a lot of parking on the road, but a lot of times you're parking on side streets. We think this is a good solution for the community, for the neighborhood, and hopefully with families, but in a different way.
Good evening, John Soroka. My wife, Rebecca, and I, we've decided to wait a terrain for almost thirty years. We raised four children here in Rose Point, and all of them and our grandchildren have been here. Last Monday, my wife and I went to five homes near three hundred Maross. Two adjacent homes on either side, and three homes on the opposite side of Maross to introduce ourselves and our plans for three hundred Maross. And this is how our conversations went. Mitch Michaels at two ninety-five Maross said, knock it down. He had no objections. Suzie Lincoln at three oh three was not home when we left her sheet of paper explaining who we are and our plans. Later that day, she sent me a text from three oh three Maross. No objections. Welcome to the neighborhood, Suzie. We talked at length with Mary Towson at three oh six Maross, and I think she's here today. We had a lovely conversation and she understood what we planned to do and was supportive. She liked that we planned to change the garage entrance to a center courtyard rather than face her house with the three current garages in two separate structures. She also volunteered to current driveway of three hundred Maross encroached on her property, and she's unhappy with that. I assure her our plans remove this encroachment and we meet setback requirements, as Mike indicated. Dan Calcaterra at two ninety Maross, the other side of three hundred, was not home when we visited. We called him later today. We had a nice conversation. Dan said he appreciated that we stopped by to explain our plans, had no objection. He also volunteered that he'd like to attend nights and be in voice of support. We also visited three oh one Maross, but no way of selling, left a sheet, and we haven't heard back. So uh we had unanimous support through four of the five immediate neighbors we were able to talk with. And now I'd like to go into more detail on why I like two car garages. As a bit of background, I grew up on a farm in Indiana. I've taken with cars and trucks my whole life. After graduating from Purdue in nineteen eighty-two, we won't talk about the basketball team. Uh I worked at Ford for thirty-eight years when I had last job being the chief engineer for commercial trucks, a dream job for a farm boy from Indiana. As a result, I am a car enthusiast. I'm lucky to own a twenty twenty-one Ford GT. It's a collector car. And then Mike got the picture up there. It's currently stored offsite in a climate-controlled garage in Troy, thirty-minute drive away. I must make an appointment to go and see it and drive my car. That's less than ideal for enthusiasts. I previously had an AC Cobra that I displayed at the Pier Park Angel Car Show. I belong to the Great Lakes Cobra Club and participate in many drives. My rationale for two separate garages is follows. One of the two garages would be dedicated for my GT, would be a man cave. This would allow me to store my GT in my house and avoid long drives to go in there. The garage would be climate-controlled and infrequently open to the elements. The garage interior will have the epoxy floor be painted in port blue, and it will be built-in storage cabinets like shown in the picture. Separate garage will segregate and protect my GT from the other garage filled with daily drivers, trash bins, bicycles, snowbowers, garage tools, et cetera. Two separate garages will also facilitate courtyard parking for guest visitors, my children and grandchildren, uh since there is on-street parking available on Maross. And two separate garages is also more aesthetically pleasing than one four-car garage. It would remove the current complaint of the neighbor of three oh six of the three-car garages facing her house. Plus, I hope that I've articulated the hardship of not granting this variance and that you will agree with me that granting a variance for a total of four cars, but in two separate garages will meet the pragmatic requirement of the ordinance and result in a more visually appealing final progress to one single car.
Any questions for council?
Yeah, one meeting goes by where I don't say anything. You're gonna have to sit through this, buddy. Uh this is the zoning board of appeals. In order to grant a variance, we need to ask you for a practical difficulty, an explanation as to why uh you cannot feasibly uh meet the requirements of the ordinance. And it seems to me that what you're saying is that uh while the ordinance allows you four cars, it would be uh less than practical uh due to the narrow, unique shape of the lot that you would um it would be less than practical to have all four uh garages on the one side. And so as to make the uh the curb appeal uh more attractive and to fit in with the harmony and the character of the neighborhood, you're asking for a more symmetrical uh home with two car garages on each side. Did I explain that properly?
Okay.
I'll I'll think that's important. The other being temperature control, two bays, and not other two bays. For a practical difficulty, because you have to outside the envelope of the house to get to the either one, one is temperature, temperature control.
It would be the water to the house because you want to access the house from your garage and bring the lotion and things like that.
So that's another, okay.
Okay.
And I think that's what you talked about, that that was part of your.
Yeah, infrequently open the door, the elements out, things like that. Well, I was just gonna say, it's also apparent to me it's not a self-created architecture.
Any else left?
No.
Anybody else? Right, anybody, you have a seat for that again? Anybody in the public that can comment on this item? What's?
I didn't intend on coming. I came to support my neighbor at three oh six Maross, but I grew up at three hundred.
I need need name and.
Oh, Michelle Holt. Grew up at three hundred Maross, currently lives at three five seven Maross. Um when I found out that the people were going to possibly buy this um property that moved in, it's been in our family for over fifty years. Um when I found out he was a car enthusiast, um it kind of, my mom just passed it, but just over a year ago. And it's obviously going to be hard to say goodbye to this home. But my dad also was a car enthusiast, and when I found out that he would be tinkering tinkering with his cars, possibly at three hundred Maross, it kind of made our families letting it go a little bit easier. Um I don't know if you know Dr. Nalt, he was part of my scare and adult. Um he was in the community with the girl here. Um he had over eighteen cars at one point, and they were all early, late thirty, early forty fours. His cars were all put at a middle pool bar in forty-five minutes away, and I just feel like um I want to support this family. Um I think that they'll do wonders and and have good memories on that property, and the car thing really kind of still.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Sure, name it others, please.
Uh Dana Copacara, I've had two nine zero. I have no problem. Seriously, no problem. I just have a couple of questions, some of which I don't know if they come to the council or do I ask. One of the problems that we have, and my other neighbor, George Jerome, can attest to it, is we have water issues. So when people build, they build up their lot. And I just want to make sure it doesn't flood. Not that I didn't do it in the back or did it in the back there. Um but um that was one of the issues that I had. The other issue that I have is that that, and they're not issues, I mean, I I approve. But I just want to make some statements. And I've never been in front of the city council, so uh you know, I just, how, I just need to know how far east it's going to go onto our lot. The air conditioners are right there, and that's our master bedroom. So the houses stands there right there. I'm just interested to know where they go, and this is probably a question for the table. But I'm just putting it on record. And then the other thing is when you live on the golf course, you get the breeze that comes from the north, and it blows. And you get sand, you get dirt, you get everything. All of our question is that there's a, there's a little bit of a fence. It doesn't have to belong with the path. It's just to stop the stuff coming. We have a back room, and um it 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 just can't clean it up anyways all the time. I just want to make sure that that's taken care of. You know, I I guess hours of operation, I can ask the city for that. Because we know that CCDs sometimes, they start at like six fifteen, again, and George and us as well, so. Five, four forty-five.
Five AM.
I got five AM a couple.
Oh, yeah, you see the headlights.
Yes.
Um but besides that, I'm looking for, they seem like very nice people and like nice folks. And that's it. I just want to.
We can sit here on the sewer of conversation. Well, one of the things, but Dan, one of the things is, so you know, is that our department will look at this. Uh built a homeowner cannot create a commission. So in other words, somebody builds a house, can't go in such a way that it impacts negatively their neighbors. So our department will be looking at elevations and how high houses and what they want. So that they communicate with the neighbors as well. As far as the, yeah, as far as the AC units, I'm sure the builder will take into consideration.
I I'm true, Mr.
Yeah.
I really am not. I'm full inch.
Okay.
Right. Thank you, guys, very much.
Mr. Jerome. You guys gotta get out of there.
I name it after George Jerome Jr. at two eight one Maross. I just want to say I'm in support of it. I'm very, um, I would say if any of the ordinance probably should be started that way. And maybe if you have a passage that some of these things over there. Some of the lawlessness stuff exists in us, should have been grandfathered. Maybe some more architectural freedom, because I think that this plan looks way better than putting it all on one side, you know, or on the back or on the side.
Anybody else in the public? See, non-public comment is closed. Who has a motion? And Mr. Ritchie.
I move that the board of zoning appeals approve the variance requests submitted on March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three by Mr. Michael Gordon on behalf of the owner, Mr. John Hope, to demolish the existing house and build a new home, which is in a R one triple A district, dwelling district. As proposed, the structure would meet all zoning requirements except for the minimum lot width, one fifty versus one forty, and one four-bay garage versus two two-bay garages. To reach this decision, we will review Mr. Matt Bakker's memo dated April third, the applicant's application, March twenty-third, the detailed review letter from a candidate dated March thirty-first, and the applicant's comments tonight. The existing non-conforming lot width requirement was enacted after the Maross lots were developed and not create a practical difficulty on any new owner. The proposed garage modification will replace two existing anon structures built over the last thirty years on the property. In addition, the existing property inspection report has listed multiple pages of required repairs, including issues with the structure if the owner desired to renovate the property. Various justifications stand hardship. The location of all the garages exceed the require uh exceed the required minimum size and front yard setbacks. The owner desires to store his unique and rare Ford car on-site in a sealed, secure environment, awaken the elements of normal garage activity. Not to mention providing the owner with quiet enjoyment. Building the house without the additional garage would be impractical. It would cause a serious practical difficulty for the owner by requiring him to find another less desirable building, not to mention the lack of convenience in order to properly secure his property. The two-garage concept also balances the center courtyard of the new house and provides for maximum off-street parking. The alternative of constructing one large, one long four-bay garage would be unsightly and have, just incur a field from the Ross Road. These brownie neighbors have been contacted by the owner and are in favor of granting these two variances. Variances are in harmony with and serves the intent or purpose of the ordinance because the variance will not result in a substantial variation from the requirements of the ordinance. The variance will not result in increased population death rate. The variance will not adversely affect the government services or the character of the district. Those houses and garages are in harmony with the construction of the type of surrounding residence. The variances will result in substantial justice being done because if the garage variance is not granted, the cost of that will difficulty in trying to find an alternative storage facility would be significant to the owner. Property in question is unusual because of subdivision was developed after the hundred and fifty, but the requirement was enacted. There is no way to rectify the current situation regarding the existing lot width. The hardships are not self-created. Approval of these variances are subject to the following condition, conditions. Proper permits to be pulled to the project as required by Department of Public Services and proper landscaping to screen the courtyard. Well, the board of zoning appeals hereby grants these foregoing variances without prejudice or precedent in any further or similar deals.
Okay, Mark. It's your first.
It is a proper motion, Joe. I would recommend that on the topic of practical difficulty, we include the finding that if the applicant were required to have all four bays in a single garage component, the climate control feature would be impractical to install and maintain.
Do you accept that from the amendment?
I do accept that from the amendment.
My support for the motion.
Support.
All right. Mr. Kozicki, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Conrad Bullgarden.
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Yes.
Mayor Theros.
Yes.
Councilmember Donovan.
Yes.
Councilmember Soroka.
Yes.
Mayor from the town of Ridge.
Yes.
Congratulations. Welcome to the neighborhood. If council is okay with this, what I'd like to do, first of all, can we adjourn as a, do we have a motion to adjourn as for, for zoning appeals? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. All right, we are now convened as the city council. What I'd like to do, unless it's for a longer meeting, I think nine, we get knocked out nine, ten, and eleven. And then take a quick break and come back for the uh sort discussion. Is that okay? Oh, twelve, that's twelve. It's out of general. All right. Just give it into the end. So item nine, consideration of request of administration to award the contract for the twenty twenty-three road. Sorry, Shane.
Okay, um as as council is aware, is aware, um two weeks ago, we proposed a program for the upcoming year for our road improvements. And uh we have on upper bed, uh those beds were received uh a week ago and have been reviewed by Hubble Racing Club. We are recommending uh that the contract be awarded to the low bidder to uh to Dango Caving Company at a cost not to exceed three point three billion dollars. And that amount includes contingency.
So I've got a question. We have, we have some delay problems last year. We added some requirements in this year's contract, which is refreshing, it makes the public understand what we required this year compared to last year.
And we did have issues last year with the timeliness of the project. Um I think it was an issue with the contractor. Um and for that, anything else, frankly, um it was also a much more extensive project. And uh we had that this year in terms of uh of of the work needed to be done on the road. Where last year we were rebuilding roads in some areas where we were going to go down very deep and uh it was much more time-consuming. This is going to be more typical milling overlay, or the, or they'll be milling uh two to three inches of asphalt, repairing curb, any base repairs that are needed, and then going over with a new asphalt. Repairing curb, any base repairs that are needed, and then going over with the new asphalt. So we think it will be much more timely, um, Dago Contracting, we've worked with before, they've got a very good reputation. We did have within the contract certain specifications, uh, that are recommended in terms of how long different segments of the work. Will take to achieve. And so, um, that was part of the contract that that is agreed upon.
Any questions from council? Mr. Wood.
Uh, Shane, I, I, um, I'm a bit concerned about Newbury Place. It's, um, it's a kind of old concrete. And, um, I'm concerned because, uh, you know, how, what they do is re- re- remove a six or eight foot, uh, piece. And then they put it back down and stuff. I'm just not sure if that's the best approach, if that's the approach that they, these guys have been using now. I was looking through here and I can't really find any approach that is, or scope of work that is fine here. But, um, I'm I'm concerned about possible costs escalating on that particular road. Because it's really in bad shape, you know, and there's, there's cracks down the middle, there's cracks off to the side. There's alligator cracks all over the place. And I mean, it's just, um, strikes me to be a very expensive project. And I, um, I'm looking here at Nick Jercy's break, well, actually, um, Nagel's breakdown on Newbury Place. And they're saying two hundred and one thousand, if I'm reading that correctly, for that, that project. How much, what is Nagel saying that it's going to cost to do Newbury?
It's, it's a hundred and six, I think, for me, it's division, uh, six, a hundred and sixty-four.
Oh, a hundred and sixty-four, seven oh five. So. No, that's not much money. And I'm a bit concerned about that. And so I guess that, um, you know, I'm going to vote for this plan. And the, the amount that we're talking about in terms of our expenditure tonight, I brought this up to you in the past, but I'm. I'm worried that that won't be enough to cover that particular roadway. I'm not an engineer, so I don't know, but it seems to me that it might be difficult.
I would just echo his concerns, driving down that road and having heard from several neighbors. Seems like a very, very temporary fix. Kind of really simply put, it's atrocious.
Yeah, I thought.
It's embarrassing to us.
Uh, it, it obviously, his attention is on our list. You know, typically what they will do is they will soft dive and pass section of the road, re- re- replace those areas. HRC has looked at the road and kind of identified what areas they, visually what they think needs to be done. I guess I, I, I will relay those comments to HRC. I, you know, I think, uh, again, when you get into these projects, these are big dollars that we're looking at. We're kind of estimating, uh, some of those quantities and costs. Typically, the fortunate is, um, you know, we've been fairly conservative, HRC, on guessing how much base repairs needed. So when we mill out, we look what's underneath that asphalt, how bad the surface is underneath. We usually have not used the quantities of base repairs that we, we've estimated, getting conservative. Which has freed up some dollars, uh, when we don't have to make those repairs. Unfortunately, on the other side, there are times when we, we, we get into it and we see that additional dollars are needing to be spent.
Can we just reach out to Nagel before they start the project? Have them reassess it, have them look what we've acquired.
Yep.
What we've left in, and see if they have some concern to address it, see if they're, are they, are they comfortable with this option being a long-term repair rather than just patch? I just want them to take a look at it again beyond HRC and see what they say.
Yes, we do that definitely.
That would be very good. Thank you.
The, the problem is it's concrete.
Yeah, it's concrete.
That's the problem. And you, you don't mill the concrete.
Yeah, you can't know, you can't know, over like concrete.
We can't, we can't put concrete on top of concrete, though. No, you have asphalt.
Right. So.
Louis, that's a very good suggestion. I feel comfortable about knowing that they're, they're fine with what they're saying here, that's.
They should give us some indication on, you know, where, what, what, how long it's going to be there before it wears out. Okay. Any other questions on council? Anybody in the public want to talk around this item? See, none. Public comment is closed. I'll entertain a motion. Anybody have one? Mr. Paul.
I move that we approve the recommended city administration award in detabulation. Against the two thousand twenty-three road improvement program in the amount of, I don't think I have this right. Two million, six hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Three point two.
Three point three. Three point three. Sorry. Three point three million. All right, does that have a motion in support?
Support.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. Item two, consideration of request from administration for purchase of new equipment for the municipal parking lot known as the M.O. lot.
Turn it over to you.
So this is a three-part request. Um, the first, the first part is to request for move the gated system with the ticket spinner. Management company has steps to go to a self-serve with three kiosks where you have your license plate and pay by plate. Second part of the question is request to increase the rates charged, um, recently by twenty-five cents at the one zero one hour rate, fifty cents at each other rate. And third part of the request is to increase the parking to eighty, from ten dollars to fifteen dollars.
And now, so I read the proposal. It says you can do it by your phone. Is there going to be an app?
Yeah.
Or is it just tap, tap in my phone number to the system? Is it app, app kiosk?
It's the latter. So we decided not to go with the app due to the cost. Um, they were charged thirty cents per transaction to the customer as well as charging down the city side, the convenience fee and a flat charge. So it felt that it was just too expensive to that at this point.
Well, then I'm going to throw this, because I use the Ann Arbor app and I don't get charged an extra fee. I use the Detroit app. I don't remember getting a fee in Detroit. At least I can recall.
No, I don't.
You don't? Yeah. So are there other options out there that are charged both the user and the city's identities or fees on both ways? It sounds like American Express. So, I mean, it's like, because I, I, I'm all for, you know. Moving along with technology, but if it's raining or snowing, asking people to go to a kiosk. Like they just sit in their car, do it on their app, and then go out to wherever they're going. Sounds convenient to me. Maybe that's just.
Yeah, so this is the passport. We continue to, we continue to look into different apps. We've got that right over here. We continue to do more research on it.
Explain that to us.
Passport is the app that comes with the Loop Two system, so it's the one that the company recommended. We can look at if there's other apps that could be, um, used with this system.
I know. So the system basically allows you then to jump the kiosk straight to an app. And then so our. Meter folks will be able to look by license plate. Is that either the app or the kiosk information would come up if they punch in, punch the license.
Exactly.
And I just add, you know, it, it, it was very, we did look at that again, to then user, to get those fees at, at each transition, transition amount. So if you have, somebody was just parking for an hour, you looked at, you know, the, you know, you know, you are, you know, doubling the cost for that, 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 that time period. So, you know, the nice, I think, you know, in terms of time gave away, now you have to go, obviously, get a ticket, go through a ticketed date. And then, uh, an exit line, go to an attendant and pay, and then the gate opens. Currently, it's a cash-only system. We don't accept credit cards. The nice part of, again, another feature of this is that you will be able to pay, um, through credit cards, uh, through cash points, if you like, points. There will be, uh, again, restations, so there shouldn't be a wait. And we will have some type of shelter. We can have some type of shelter over it, so you're, you're, you know, protected from inclement weather. And, uh, and if you find that you are in a, at a restaurant, having dinner at the garage door and you're running late. You can, on your phone, uh, you will get a, you can get a message, uh, from, uh, the, to, on your phone, uh, text to extend the time period.
As long as you're paid by credit.
If you're paid by credit card, yes.
I'm hardworking on that spot.
You know, and, and this, I must say, this is the same system that, uh, Gross Point City has, uh, implemented. Because they were having a lot of issues with their intended lots and people being.
Boy, there's, there's a joke here, but I will leave.
But it's working. I think they've been happy talking about both the mayor and the city manager. It's worked out well. And Gross Point Park, I understand, is looking at the loop system for, uh, the, the Churchill corridor in the park. So another thought, we had looked at other systems and, and frankly, we thought they had the continuity of the same equipment in each of the parking areas. And along the Churchill corridor, uh, was important.
So can I suggest we talk to the other Gross Points and try to use our common sense scheme? So we all have parking on Mac Avenue except for those one shores. And we all have parking in various different places in our communities. If we're going to go out and find an app to tie into this loop system, perhaps if we all do it together, we can negotiate a better price.
We tried that, we did try that. Yes, we did. And frankly, the, you know, the advice of the, of the other city managers, don't sign up for that, that app.
Well, no, I'm saying that, whatever future, whatever future is.
Because they're looking, they're looking for an alternative as well.
Just, just to be clear, so in this, in the city right now, we park in a parking space, you can use the passport app to pay your space. And so would that be an option here? No.
It is that.
It just, it just doesn't seem, and, and because, because it would be an additional expense. I, I would say from the matter of, and maybe, maybe this makes, I'm outing myself as like bad personal finance, but I use the app all. I, I use the app all the time because it's easier than, and, and it gives me a reminder when the thing, thing ends.
Give a consumer's choice, if they.
Yeah, I'd give a consumer choice. I, I would say like, let's do it. And then at the same time, let's continue to negotiate to get a better deal.
They have to pay for the app to connect it. Yeah, we're paying an, an, a price per.
We're paying twenty, the city would pay twenty-five cents per transaction plus two point nine percent. On top of the thirty. And thirty cents for charging. Plus thirty cents for charging the user. If we put a notification on the kiosk to describe the citizens, why we made this choice? Because I, 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 I am sure that people are going to ask us in six months, why don't you use an app? So it would be good to have it, like, hey, we're working on it, so.
Are the rates, I know we're so informal here, are the rates that the city is charging similar to what we're charging?
This is easy.
There's.
The higher lower.
Yeah. We're kind of in the middle between the city and, uh, and the park per hour. And, and considerably lower than some of, uh, the neighboring, uh, coming communities.
Love and I are just saying, we use the city's app and everything else.
City of Detroit.
All the time. Um, do they charge the same fees in their system?
They may have got a lower fee because of the number of lots. I'm not sure what Detroit's being charged. Because of volume.
Right.
So the, the Park Detroit, the Park Detroit app is not, is not proprietary. To them, they didn't develop the app.
Not that I'm aware of, no. I'm not sure who the platform is.
It's a pretty good platform.
Yeah.
We might run one, we could look at.
All right, so here, I know, yeah, being very formal here, I say we move forward with this proposal, but that we look very seriously at where we go with it, even in, within six months.
Yeah.
And Tim, I have a question with the, like, the Park Detroit. Do you know if those fees are built into the cost?
Yeah, if we were to offer the app, we probably have to increase our parking fees even higher to accept that fee.
Right, right.
Well, we, I, I guess we can, we, we would recommend just based upon the comments that we can at least get the equipment ordered. Our contractor, the current, uh, manager of the, the lot expires June thirtieth. At least we can get things to J.R., but between now and June thirtieth, um, we'll come back with some options for apps, what the cost implications would be. And, uh, and how that would relate to the, the fee structure.
So I'm going to suggest that we vote just to order the equipment, price is indicated here, and not yet to vote on the price setting. Because the, the cost of parking might change depending on what you guys find out through now of implementation in July. Is that fair?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion? Anybody?
Well, just repeat that.
Yes. First of all, any comments? Yes, and, so, so I forgot, we got really informal, the heat's getting to me.
And your, you know, six figure, I was concerned, you know, um, I don't know how to use apps, so I mean, I just, I'm the old man. I go to them, I just put cords in the machine, so it looks, works right for me. But I see that kind of fifty percent go much higher for that first hour. People just come in there and go to the, people go and they're just going to, why they, you know, it's going to be more expensive and going away with that person in that, that lot. We, that, ooh, shouldn't that be some cost savings doing that? No. Eliminating a person, right?
Yeah.
So why, why, why do you raise the cost? That's my, that's my question.
For the equipment, for the future usage of apps and all that kind of good stuff.
I know, you know, a lot of folks don't use apps, they just.
Well, you can, you'll still have coins.
Yeah, but I'm thinking it's, it's that short-term use is tough.
And we'll look at that first.
We can look at that first.
Yeah, like thirty minutes. Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Yep, anybody else in the public? Mr. Pearl.
George Jerome Jr. again, speaking for Ross. Um, so the way I understand this is you're getting rid of the person in the booth and then there's just going to be apps and guests. I got to tell you guys, like, the, the city of Gross Points, like, the parking's up, I can't stand going in those places. I mean, the amount of times you get stuck behind someone, his machine stops working, they, either their credit card stops, and then you got all these people backed up. I mean, the lot, when, when, when you guys do the parade, I mean, I can't tell you how many times you get stuck behind somebody going out in the structure. You know, across there, because the only way to do it, and then they, we have to call a phone number, we have to send somebody over. I mean, my wife and I talk about this, like, we love hoppers or a person in the head booth. I mean, that's why we're going gateless. We're not, you're not going to get stuck by somebody. They're, they're, they don't pay, they don't catch them.
Okay.
I just, I mean, I just, I can't tell you how much I keep standing with the city.
I just want to.
I mean, I, but, I, we still, I still like having a person there to pay the money and do it.
Oh, they're great.
I'm not that old, but I mean. Very judge. That's like, I, 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 I just, I can't tell you, people say that they like the fact that the farms, the farms is different. Got someone.
Tim, what's his tax bill?
Well, we can talk about that.
You missed it, it was last month. Thanks, Josh. Anybody else? All right, public comment is closed. Do I have a motion to allow the city to purchase new equipment?
Let me make a motion as this is appropriate. My motion is to award a contracted traffic and safety control systems, Inc. In the amount of thirty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars for the purchase of three Loop Two parking pay stations.
Support?
Support.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
And then there's an addition purchase of the equipment for the, the montrade, do you have that?
That's going to be handled separately.
It'll be handled separately.
All, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Oppose.
Name. I, I'll oppose.
Sorry. I just don't like names, Bart. Okay. No, I get it. Sorry.
All right, uh, item eleven, resolution approving the designation of the Pier Park Community Building as full allocation for combined precinct one, two, four. The combined precinct created five for the August eighth, twenty twenty-three city primary election in health and November seventh, twenty twenty-three stimulation. Mr. Kuzicki, I'm assuming this is you?
Yes, uh, before you, uh, you have neither request for a resolution, uh, essentially moving, uh, the polling location for all of Gross Point's holders to the Pier Park Community Building. Uh, for this year's August and November election. And, uh, one of the reasons I'm asking is because we're anticipating, uh, lower voter turnout. And having everyone, all of the election activities under one group has a, a lot of advantages if they outline their, you know. And, uh, besides, uh, something different for the voter, uh, there's really not, uh, not too many downsides that can be overcome. With some proper planning.
All right, some more formal questions from council. Was there Sorka, then Mr. Wood?
So, you know, I apologize, Derek, I, I, I wanted to reach out ahead of time. I will say, I am very concerned with the idea of locating, I'm not, the idea of collapsing precincts for the city elections and the primary election, the city primary election, if it happens. I, I don't have a problem with it.
for the city elections and the primary election, the city primary election if it happens, I I don't have a problem with it. Um I think it makes sense, there's gonna be low turnout, um and we can save some money by putting it in one space and just making it easier. That said, I have a concern about doing it out of the park. I think um I think doing it in city hall would be preferable. I know that it would require perhaps city hall employees to to move or relocate, because I I looked at this. But my concern is, um our parks are are blessedly private, uh people, you know, only residents can go in there, I think it sends, even if everyone in the, everyone in the community is able to get into the park on election day, whether they have a park pass or not, I think putting the polls behind a gate that requires in the past, people to show a card to entry is a a bad message. I also think even though that there is the ability to kind of, for not for handicap voters or or people that have difficulty getting their wrong, to get closer to um the community building, I think I can imagine some people might not necessarily anticipate that being the case, and that could be a uh as a result, they might be less than likely to come out to the polls. That said, I want to be really clear, I think we've had really strong election administration in all the elections that I've been around in this community. I think there's a lot of terror about getting people to the polls and getting people to vote, which is the most important thing that we can do. And I will also acknowledge that the lion's share of the votes that happen at any election in recent years happened, people mailing it in or bringing it or dropping it off, but just on a a practice, not not a practical level, but frankly, just as a matter of principle, I don't like the idea of putting the polling place at Pier Park.
I guess I have similar concerns there. Uh as soon as you wrote this to us, I thought, hmm. Uh in the November, um cold rainstorm from the big parking lots down to the community center. And I get that it's a very um good open space, it's manageable for you guys to uh do the elections, and that's very, that's very good. Um in your, in your statement here, you say that uh the entire lot down, the inner, the inner lot uh will be dedicated to handicap voters and voters who request to park there due to limited mobility. Is it possible to, is it feasible to open it up to everybody, just let everybody just drive down there? I'm concerned that it's gonna be crummy weather on in November, and it's gonna be a lot of people to walk, not far, admittedly, but some people in our community might not like that. And we have allowed people to drive down there under supervision from Hutch's guys and stuff to make the traffic flow a little bit easier, or have you thought about that, and it's just?
Uh well, we certainly can do that, uh just anytime, you know, that people don't see that as a road, even though it clearly is a road, uh and it just would require additional staff from Pier Park to monitor uh pedestrians and make sure that you know, anyone walking doesn't walk down the middle of the road, they use the sidewalk.
Uh Hutch, I mean, are you, would you feel that that it would be feasible to allow all voters to just drive down through that little gate? And then have one or two of your guys maybe assist in the parking?
I think I think it's doable, if you staff it right, I mean, there's gonna be backups, obviously. But it is doable if it's staffed properly. May not be optimal in terms of what you're talking about, but it's doable.
Well, anybody else before we go back?
Uh I am definitely in support of this, um I've worked very closely closely with Derek on other projects. And so when I look at um point one for pros greatly increases manageability of election operations and workers, if you take a look at all five of those points, and when I think about, you know, election fraud and a lot of these points come into play, um I think this is great, Derek, if we can streamline things. Um I am confident that the pros outweigh the cons, but also understanding concerns you may have regarding this direction, so I am definitely in support of this.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Joe.
I I have the same concerns that Love has with you're not gonna walk on the sidewalk, you walk down the middle of that road, and if if everybody drove down, that'd be one thing, and you're gonna be lined up, but that's really the only way to to pull it off, I think, is everybody drives down, you park, you get out, you vote, you get that in your car and you drive out, and there's no walking whatsoever. And that way, you eliminate the pedestrian part, I mean, I have a hard time right now with my bag and these are, I'd have to park and walk all the way down, and I know Andy too.
That's your something?
Um I I I agree, I think that there's plenty of people that will need, they'll balk if the idea of having a walk, and it could be deteriorating. Let's just try it, I'm all in favor for the other reasons that you cited in the memo. But I think we should try, but I also think to try and do something that's at least asking at the guard gate, do you need assistance driving down? But you know what, Derek, even with all that, even with the accommodating people to drive right up to the uh the community building, you're gonna have to have a very good marketing plan for this, to tell people that we are doing this. This is a very major change uh for voting in this community since, you know, when I was in high school, alright, it's a major change. So it's not impossible, I think we should try, I think I think we should take a look at it, I think there should be some provisions for parking uh for people, so they can have access to that, uh it's a long line, but with those two conditions, I would be supportive.
Derek, how many how many factual bodies do you anticipate voting that they, knowing that absentee is about seven percent for this election? Uh I don't have the the exact numbers, but you know, I I broke it down by the hour, I mean, it's it's really, it's really manageable, and I think that box on that way from, I I don't have that, I don't have it. So I think it's manageable, I definitely think that we can have more staff and open open the road. Um it just, it that that's my biggest concern is the pedestrians, but I think that, I think if we had additional staffing and um you know, I think if we just say the inner lot, please use the inner lot if you need it, or or something to that effect, just so that ever, because some people might glad it's just part of it now, the lot.
When does this decision have to absolutely? In other words, why do you have to publish the polling location?
I suppose for the primary, I believe, I believe it's it's May. But I think before you win the memo is, I mean, if you, if, I I don't, I think it can wait, um it has to be done sixty days prior to the election.
Alright, so we can, I I for my, I'd like to rethink this, I'd like to take it back a little bit to the drawing board to see if we can address some of the concerns here, that's where I am today. I I think if we can revisit this in May. That would be all, that's this right? And you know, anybody else? Sorry, John?
And specifically, I would like to revisit the idea of doing it at city hall. I think it's a more effective location in terms of, well, there has never been any sort of uh security concern in terms of uh our elections in this community.
Or, well, it would be more physical security, and and we're not talking, this is not that conversation, it's more of just like
right, the what, you know, we just, it it feels better to have it on our property, have all the equipment. Oh, yeah.
And have the security cameras and.
Yeah, and I I, it's one of the reasons why I'm thinking city hall is great, it's a central location, it's got the public safety right here, so it's about as safe as it could possibly be. And I perhaps we could figure out ways to deal with the logistical challenges of city employees and and all those sorts of things, but especially considering that only thirty percent of people vote on election day, these are going to be probably very low turnout elections. It would be, I I would, I would much prefer that.
This is also good.
Okay, hold on. Uh alright, good questions from council? Oh, you're just totally the same.
Yes.
Anybody in the public wanna comment on this, like Andrew, Kirby, or that name, Mr. Jensen?
Um Andrew, three oh six Fisher, I remember when the people, people voters, they have a very concern, it's like condensing voting, voting poll opposition, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna attend them tonight, I think you're very concerned going from seven to we have to on to one. Um I know this primaries and office elections aren't, are are smaller, but there's a concern that expressed about using polling places, poll accessibility for residents, so I am concerned about moving the halls to one location, I understand why, there's some logic to it, but we're all quite conservative, thank you.
Dan Johnson, three three six Kirby, um just a quick question, seventy percent will vote absentee ballot.
That's what Derek said, yeah.
Right.
That's what Derek said.
And that's pretty accurate, is correct. So we're already looking at an extremely low turnout in uh August and uh November this year anyway, because we're showing that a lot, I think, correct?
Traditionally.
Okay, so why don't we spread, or maybe it's not possible, I don't know, why don't you take the remaining ones over the course of twelve hours in a day, or whatever they're supposed to be? Why not locally, Aileen, Oregon, whatever, the where the uh, where the panel boards are? The five or six booths in there, and we parks in a park lot, no one drives down, you don't have any any pedestrian risks or any risks of, especially law is played out of the park. And parking in a park lot, walking, James and Aileen, Oregon, is that, is that the same difference? I know the one in Kirby feels the same before.
You're talking about the warming house?
Where your, where your rock garden is, where your, yeah, I don't know if you're the panel wall.
You cut me to the quick, Dan.
No, that's, I I know that's your rock garden, bro.
Ray.
Seems pretty tribal.
They're rated, they're state clear preserving. They're rated rocks, probably true.
You're talking twenty-five percent, twenty-five to thirty-seven population voting, uh low turnout, maybe just this time only. Why not spread it out over the twelve, thirteen, fourteen hours, whatever it is, and have them go there, and no one drives down, they park right in front, and park a lot, they park a lot, do a park. And they walk in, they vote, you can put, how many in there, six or seven, I just don't know the numbers, so the numbers may uh leave that whole idea. But uh we're talking low turnout anyway, and only twenty-five percent and thirty percent of the low turnout, and we park in the main park, and I'm walking and voting in the the um, I call it the sports, I don't know, but it's.
Why not?
Yeah, the warming house, there's room in there, there's rest rooms in there, it's AD compliant, um you know, I I just I I guess we could shoot them, probably the hell would be how many people, so, so. Say if it starts going, drives down the, the, right.
Alright, anybody else in the hall?
Thank you.
Thanks. Alright, public comment is closed, any other comments at council?
What is the odds and probability of us having a primary?
We won't know then, petitions are turned in?
I don't know, really, I mean, there would have to be a lot, a lot of people, and is there any initiative, valid initiative that might be on?
Exactly, and we know valid initiatives in the November election, and they have a primary, you can't add more than twice the number of candidates on board if you're just.
What's the pleasure, council?
I I guess that I would make a motion to uh delay the discussion, uh and motion till next May. And with the provision that staff will come back with a little bit more investigative details in terms of um you know, other areas that we could effectively have um our our combined, our combined voting area.
Take a formal motion, this may be, is the motion as supportable?
Let me just a- add something here, is it possible that we could get some information, Derek, from you as far as we're consolidating, we're 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 doing a lot of publication here, that that we're gonna have low turnout, now, that's a, that's a bad thing. First of all, I mean, as opposed, as opposed to forecast, it's gonna be a lot of turnout, or planned then, based on low turnout, low voter turnout, that's just not the way it should be done. Um but I would like to have some other factual information as far as saying, what's the difference? Consolidating in here at city hall and winning at the at the farms here, I mean, it doesn't seem, if you do, you are assuming that there's gonna be low turnout, and you're you're assuming that seventy percent absentee ballot. Why aren't we just waiting here? We have a parking lot, we have facilities, we have everything here.
Let's, let's, okay, let's stick to the motion, I I understand, but.
I would like to add some facts.
Move the question, thank you.
Motion, Mr. Mayor, getting away on one.
Exactly, so I have support for the motion. Very supportive of the motion.
Support.
Alright, uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Um no.
Wait, to be clear, what is this?
To adjourn the, to adjourn the.
Just come over to the table, oh, yeah.
Table it to the main meeting.
Let's try it again, the motion which is supported is to adjourn this item, so next, this coming May is me. With that being the issue, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item twelve, motion carries, consent agenda, request of public hearing for the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four proposed budget to May eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Anyone, anybody wanna move with consent agenda?
I have a next one, uh.
I'm sorry. Anybody wanna, I have a ticket out, please, sorry. Any other items to be, anyone else want any other? Alright, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda, I uh consent agenda items, A through E and G?
I'll move that.
Or? Or all favor uh the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, item F, consideration of request to approve March twenty twenty-three invoices.
I I that's not the, um, that's not like, that's not the right one. Uh consideration of a request from Parks and Rec to award a contract for weekly landscape service.
That's E.
That's E, you said, uh.
I said, uh.
I have E.
What?
I have E. That's E.
Uh I must be looking at, um, I'm sorry, but the issue of it is the landscaping. The landscape law. Look, it's a basic question, alright, um for that contract, and I can't, I can't seem to find any information about that. But let me just ask, uh Jane or anybody else, is this, this is new for us to do, is this right, Jane?
Uh it it is now, this is actually the second year um that we we contracted out the maintenance of all the landscaping beds and flower areas uh throughout the the park. And so um it would be a continuing uh contract that we had last year.
And it's the same people, or is it?
Yes.
Okay, and I I I was just including maintenance of the rain garden?
Yes.
Okay, and also the place game?
Yes.
I'm your rocker.
My rocker. Okay.
Alright, I'm satisfied. So I have a motion to approve item twelve F, consideration of request to approve twenty twenty-three invoices.
I do, well, I made that motion.
Anybody support?
I support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries, let's take a five minute break, everybody, we'll come back, it'll make comedy.
I don't mind. I just, like, I was having a trouble sharing, like, we got trying to put stuff up there, and it was like. So yours looks like it's going well, so.
Get that water, buddy. Get that water done. The water in your basin, get it out.
I've been having it this year.
Spray, you keep spraying, right?
It was already planned place.
Is he that boy? Are you going to have him now? The ADW dinner? Did you answer to people? Today, Alfred? Let me, let me find out.
I'm a dead, no idea.
They're early voting next year. I think they do it in the.
But I'm listening, it's late.
Well, I'm thinking you could actually have two. You have one up here. You know what I'm saying? Like, no, he's like, oh. Some liar received.
Yeah, let's do this, we can.
I'd like to tell me back to order, item A, public meeting on the clean water, state revolving fund, CWSRF project land inland district sewer improvement project was to reside.
So I think those in the audience who are not aware, several months ago, Hallowa Park provided a presentation to the city council on the basis of design for a significant sewer improvement program for gross point farms. The intent is to construct a pump station, a way to convey stormwater out to Lake St. Clair, and reduce the amount of wet weather flow coming into the, going to our Kirby Road pump station by about a third, which is obviously very significant. It's a, it's a major project, an expensive project, but something that is felt needed to address the seemingly increased frequency of extreme weather events, heavy rainfall, and so forth. As part of that process, after the basic design is completed, we are now seeking assistance, federal assistance for funding, primarily through the state revolving fund, which would provide low interest loans on a major project. There are other grants we are also pursuing to cover some of the costs for major capital improvement project. As part of that application for both, for the federal and state funding, a public hearing is required to go over a project plan, and that's what we're here for tonight. Jennifer Veroli is here, I'm Maxwell from Hallowa Park, to provide a project plan. So that would be really the public portion of, of the meeting, to go over the project plan. Following the project plan proposal, council will be asked, consider adopting the project plan, as well as commencing the final engineering for the project. So with that, I will turn it over to Jennifer.
Thank you, Shane, I guess you save the best for last, so that's good. Thank you, city council, Mr. Mayor, for letting me present the project plan for this very important inland district sewer separation project. So the purpose of tonight is to present the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, the CWSRF project plan, and it's to provide a forum for community participation. So we're going to go over briefly the overview, the loan program, and then we'll review the items that are in the project plan, such as the system history, the need for project, the alternatives, the overall project costs, and estimated user costs, the social and environmental impacts, the mitigation of these impacts, the schedule, changes since the draft plan was posted, and then go provide any answers to questions that people may have. So what is the CWSRF loan program? Quite simply, it's a low interest loan program. So for fiscal year twenty-three, the twenty-year interest rate was one point eight seven five percent. And a thirty-year interest rate was two point one two five percent. So, these rates won't be finalized for this, for this project till October of this year. And, but we suspect that the rates will be very close to these, if not exactly these rates. Incidentally, if this, currently, if the city were to go out to market for, for a loan, it's estimated that for a twenty-year rate, you'd be looking at a four percent interest, and for a thirty-year loan, you'd be looking at a four and a half percent interest rate. So you can see, just before I walk, you know, it does move the city to try to get this low interest loan. So what can you use this low interest loan dollars for? It's for planning, designing, and constructing eligible wastewater projects. It's administered by Eagle through their water infrastructure finance division. So to qualify, currently, the city must do three things. One, they must prepare and submit an Eagle approvable project plan. Two, they must provide a public meeting and comment opportunity for the plan. And then three, they have to pass a resolution adopting the plan. Final Eagle approval and city acceptance of the loan is decided later in the loan program. So, um, in October, the city will find out if they're, if they're in what's called the fundable range. And if the city decides to pursue the SRF loan, we anticipate that your loan closing would not be until around August of twenty-twenty-four. So you can back out of the SRF loan program at any time prior to your loan closing. So you're not committed, by passing the council resolution tonight, you're not committed to SRF, you know, and proceeding with the SRF project or doing an SRF loan. So, real quick, the Gross Point Farm sewer system was originally, was built in the nineteen twenties, and it was originally built as a combined sewer system. So what this means is your sanitary sewage and your stormwater runoff, they're all collected in the same pipe. And so when you have rain events, for small storms, it's, you know, typically there are no issues. And then for medium storms, typically there are no issues. But it's for those really large, big storms where you can have issues like basement flooding. So due to the increased occurrence of basement flooding, the Lakeside District sewers were separated in the early two thousands. So, why did the city just do the lakeside? Well, it's all to do with topography, and that the ground, there's a high point on that east, western boundary of your lakeside district, and it runs along Ridge Road generally. And so, the, the lakeside district was easier to separate sewers because you could install storm sewers, and they can discharge by gravity out to Lake St. Clair. We'll come back to our issue over here on the inland district. So what's the need for project? Starting in two thousand eleven with increased frequency and magnitude of rain events that resulted in increased rate, frequency and magnitude of basement and street flooding. And the reoccurring flooding resulted in numerous studies in the inland district, starting in two thousand eleven, and it culminated in the sewer system evaluation study that was finalized in August of twenty-twenty. In that study, thirteen different alternatives were investigated, and alternative six was the recommended alternative. So alternative six is what we're calling the inland district sewer separation project. And it includes thirty-six hundred linear feet of forty-eight inch force main, and thirty-two hundred linear feet of gravity main out to the lake. We've got a hundred cubic feet per second stormwater pump station. And so if you come back to our little diagram, and the reason why, says why we need the force main and the pump station. So when we separate all that yellow area in the background there, it's thought to be directed to the pump, and then the pump's going to put it in the force main, get it up over this high point, and then once we're there, it can go by gravity out to Lake St. Clair. Uh, so this, it also includes separating the three hundred and ten acres with the installation of seventeen thousand linear feet of new storm sewer. Um, we're converting the sixty-inch combined interceptor to a storm interceptor. And then south of Maras, we have the partial separation along Vernon, McMillan, and McKinley Streets with the installation of eleven thousand five hundred linear feet of new storm sewer. So, this project plan requires that you got to look at certain alternatives, and the do, the do, no action alternative, that's a requirement. So with no action, then the city would be, continue to be subject to potential basement flooding for the design event. So this is not a favorable option. Um, another required alternative is to look at regionalization. And this would require building infrastructure and pipes and pumps and force mains out to the closest treatment plant. So go to, go to GLWA, or you go to Warren, and this would be a tremendous amount of energy and a lot, and very expensive. So this is also not a favorable option. That's messed up. So the fourth alternative was to be to look at, let's see, there we go, stormwater retention basin and sewer improvement. So the basin would result, you would need a three point three million gallon basin, and you would have to construct the new storm sewers in the same areas that we talked about for the selected alternative. And it's more expensive than the selected alternative, so this is considered not favorable. So when we talk about our preferred alternative, um, all the, most of the construction activities are proposed at existing locations. Within the combined sewer system or within city-owned property, with the exception of the force main through the Country Club of Detroit and the new outfall to the lake. So, these are all the same elements that we just talked about, but they're grouped into these three contracts. And this is part of what was presented to council at your October meeting. So we have contract one, which is going to be the force main and gravity sewer. Contract two is the pump station, and then contract three is sewer separation. So, um, what you see in this graphic is your plan view, and we have the pump station over in this corner of Maras and Chelpont. We'll show that one next. And you have your force main, that's going to bring the flows up. And then at the high point, it's going to convert over to like a gravity sewer, and then the gravity sewer will take it out to the lake. And below is a profile to show you like this, the force main and then the gravity sewer. Contract two is the hundred CFS pump station, and it's going to be located in the parcel that's the northeast corner of Maras and Chelpont. And this is a city-owned property. So we're all set.
It's also one of the lowest points in the entire city. It is, it's the lowest point in the city.
Um, so what you see in this graphic is you've got the, that sixty-inch converted storm pipe that is all, this is all underground, it'll come into a, the flows will come in, discharge into a junction chamber, and then we have our seventy-eight inch input into our lovely new pump station, and then the pump is going to pump the flows into that force main. These are some cross-section views, and these were presented again at your October meeting, but it's to give you an idea of all the equipment that needs to be housed in the pump station itself. But not to worry, the pump station is going to be located, built inside this Cape Cod style home. So it's going to match with the, you know, existing area, and to the average person, they're not even going to realize that's a pump station. They'll just think it's another beautiful house in Gross Point Farms. So all the details of color and bushes and all that kind of stuff, that'll get worked out later. But it's the style of home that will be, will be used. So that was contract two, and now this is the contract three locations of the, that'll go, oh yeah. So we looked at the northwest quad separation, and these are different views of the northeast quad separation, and then we have the separation of south of Maras, um, along Mount Vernon.
Sorry.
Oh. Okay. So we have our partial separation, south of Maras, along Mount Vernon, McMillan, and McKinley Streets. So, uh, these three contracts, they total thirty-nine million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So we talk about estimated user cost. This is an estimated average residential user, and by user, it's household. Uh, over, we're assuming a twenty-year loan for, for the thirty-nine million. And so the cost, incremental cost increase per month is, on average, is forty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. So this is a theoretical calculation, there's a lot of variables involved, but this is an average user cost. So when we talk about in, short-term positive impacts, there's increase in jobs and workers utilizing community amenities and employing local contractors. Uh, short-term negative impacts, of course, are the noise, dust, and traffic related to construction. Uh, long-term positive impacts, we have reduced frequency and magnitude of basement flooding, stormwater being removed from the combined system, reduced flows to the Kirby Road pump station, reduced flows to the regional system, thereby benefiting neighboring communities, reduced sewage. Reduced sewage fees with the Great Lakes Water Authority. Increased level service for the entire city. Uh the long term negative impacts are none. Uh another required element is to look at irreversible direct and indirect impacts. So there's possible uh uh impacts due to like if you have damage from or accidents from construction. And then there's the commitment of non-recoverable resources. Um but again, these resources are traded off to provide the necessary protection to public safety and health. With the reduction in frequency and magnitude of basement flooding. So how are we going to mitigate um these impacts? So for on the short term side, uh we would comply with any required permits. Um residential notifications for construction uh will be, they'll they'll be provided. Um construction traffic can be scheduled to avoid traffic flow periods. And we have routine street sweeping during construction. The mitigation of long term impacts, uh areas will be restored uh once the work is completed. And then the pump station itself will be housed in a Cape Cod style exterior, keeping up with the city's aesthetic in the area. Okay, schedule. So we uh the city posted the um public meeting on their website on March twenty fourth. And the draft project plan has been available since then, it was available online and also a hard copy at City Hall. Um so tonight, we're doing the formal public meeting and the city council will uh ad- adopt the resolution to adopt the project plan. And then we have until May first uh to make any final changes or ans- provide answers to questions. And that will go in the final project plan that's submitted on or before May first. When we talk about the construction schedule. And these are our like three contracts again, so contract one is our force main. The design for that needs to start this month. We're in order, the biggest thing is we have to can start construction in November of two thousand twenty four. Because that work's gonna occur in the golf course. So we need to can start construction um in their off season. So design needs to start immediately. And we anticipate that that will continue through January of two thousand twenty four. Um and construction starting in November of twenty four and ending in October of two thousand twenty five. Contract two, which is the new stormwater pump station, that design needs to start this month as well. And that will be finished in March of two thousand twenty four. With construction starting in June of two thousand twenty four and ending in May of two thousand twenty six. And then our contract three is the combined sewer separation. The design would start later than July of this year. And we'd be done in April of two thousand twenty four with construction starting in September of twenty four and ending in September twenty twenty six. A few changes since the draft uh project plan was posted. Um in section three, under table three two, there was a typo where a period meant to be a comma, so changed. The dollar value, but anyone read reading it would understand. Uh section four, we just changed the schedule so it matched the three contracts instead of uh separating out the partial separation from the full separation. So with that, we will open it up to questions.
All right, thank you, great presentation. Let's try to follow a little order here. So I'm gonna start uh right this time. Moving into the questions. I didn't have a question, I have a comment, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Maxwell, Mr. Montreal, Mr. Haminga, administration. Um I can't tell you, having been involved in these types of issues. For close to three decades, unfortunately. This is a very well drafted plan. I don't think it's meant to eliminate basement flooding categorically. I think our residents are still gonna have to do things such as make sure that their. Uh leads are clean, especially if they have trees in the area, disconnect downspouts. Make sure that they take steps in their basements to minimize the risk of flooding. But I know that a thirty percent decrease in the amount of flow to our pump station. Will make us less dependent dependent on downstream entities. Uh such as Great Lakes Water Authority and uh other public entities, so to speak. I think this is a very good investment for those who live, uh work and visit the city of Ghost Point Farms. It'll be messy for a while, but I applaud our administration, Mr. Mayor, you, our city attorney. I know it's taken a lot of negotiation with a lot of different groups. And I think this is the first step and uh I am in support of approval of the various resolutions, requests for qualifications and the ultimate contracts. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Muro. Mr. Storka? Yeah, um I also share the appreciation for everyone involved, this work that went to put together this plan. You know, the first time I really got a chance to delve dive deep into it was back in uh February of two thousand twenty one. So we're a long time getting to this point, I think. It it's a thoughtful um process because it's such a big pro- uh such a big process. Um you know, at the same time, it's not moving fast enough that the boats is basements are flooded. Um and so that is uh that is a real thing, I think we wanna move with deliberate speed. Um and I think that's what we have tried to do um throughout this process. That said, I did wanna ask mainly for just public clarification, because I think people could. Um you know, and I've had questions asked of me. Um specifically, why, you know, just just to kind of clarify, so the the pumping station at the corner of of Shell font or Ross. Is going to take pressure off the more southern portions of the city. And that's because of that alleviation of pressure. Basements are less likely to flood, so the important thing for people to understand is what goes on in that northeast. Lowest portion of the city is critical for alleviating pressure downstream. The other question, and and this actually gets an actual question rather than a statement. Um is can we explain why, you know, a lot of people have asked, you know, why aren't all of our sewers being separated um in the this inland district? And why is this plan um uh the one being put forward? I mean, the way that I've described it is it's about trying to be just spend money in the smartest way possible. How can we have maximum impact uh in terms of redu- uh the reduction of flooding? With minimizing what is already going to be a considerable expense for state the city and taxpayers. But can Ki- you know, I don't know Shane or anyone else in the administration could, or perhaps our consultants can explain. Why we're only separating that northeast quadrant and um the M Streets, uh you know, Mount Vernon and McKinley and.
So I'm interested in you.
I'll start and you can uh I'll let it.
You can correct him.
Okay.
Uh I think you actually, I think you kind of worded it pretty properly, what what this is doing is um. If I taking a significant volume of storm water out of the system. It benefits the whole system because now you've added additional capacity capacity uh at the Kirby Road Pump Station. Uh that that serves the entire community. So um that was really the basis is how we get the biggest bang for the buck. And uh we looked at those alternatives and uh they are in that uh two thousand and.
You want some light reading?
We examine, you know, what are the options, how can we, you know, you know. Have the the biggest impact uh for the dollars. Um and this is not to say that down the road, additional steps that can can be taken. Uh we've begun phases um uh starting with the 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 Lakeside District. And the real intent of of the separation of Lakeside District and it was was to prevent the storm combined sewage from overflowing into Lake St. Clair. And so by reducing that combined sewage in that district, we've we've been able to essentially eliminate the spillover of sanitary sewage into the lake. This is now dried on our system even more and uh will will provide uh relief uh uh for for the entire community.
Great, and I have one additional question, because I know this is very theoretical in terms of the cost for individual um taxpayers in the city overall. But I just wanted clarification on, uh I guess it's slide twenty six where we talk about um the average cost, monthly cost. Is this already factoring in? I know that we're gonna have some millages right for uh our sewer system coming up. Is there any, is there any of that going on here or is this just a straight?
I wish we would not have this slide in this presentation because there are some factors.
Yeah.
But as part of our uh our submittal for the project plan prescribed and what we have to provide. Um certainly, I mean, going from a twenty year to a thirty year body here or or SRF loan will have a significant impact on. What the what the annual or monthly cost is for residents. Uh there are other things that, you know, we will look at, conjunction uh with this project. Is there debt services coming off the books that we can now substitute? There will be costs, not bad about it, but we will be working closely with the 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 budget committee to to try to. Structure in a way that that is the most profitable way possible for residents.
I appreciate the estimates on there, even if you know and this is like the slide says, a theoretical calculation with lots of variables. And I'm confident that this council and future councils will do its absolute best to keep the overall cost up.
I have this one comment, um I'd like to adopt what Councilman John Veluley said, the compliments made to you all for doing this magnificent report. Um as I told Shane earlier today, I learned a lot. I see this historical document um detailing all the the rain events just laid out so succinctly, so thank you for that. And I have one question that was already addressed, and that was what is a high surcharge area? And I got clarification on that earlier today. So this document, I just had that one question, thank you, thank you.
No comments, I think everything is laid out pretty easily to understand and. And I'm really excited about the project and it's a long overdue, but it took us a long time to get that. Thank you.
Um I don't have any questions, uh Mr. Mayor, but I do have a just a comment. You know, this is um, this has been a real thorny issue for years. Um in Ghost Point Farms, and I can tell you, I mean, my like father and his basement and and his house affected beneath underneath. Uh just destroyed uh with two big flooding things, so. This council has heard a lot of stories such as that. And they know that we had to really do um some betting on some of these different proposals and with the cost. And I say this only because. There's been a lot of rumors. And this fact going around about this project. What you're hearing tonight is exactly what this council has worked on and other councils before us have had to take into consideration. So I hope that this proposal uh really does get some interest as far as people actually reading it and understanding. Because there's a lot of rumors going around, this is the factual. Understanding what we're dealing with right now.
Thanks, I've I've written down my comments, I'm not nearly as sloven, sophisticated as Beth and and you guys. So I've written down some some things that I'd just like to say. Uh this is a monster, monster project, let's let's make sure of that. It's a monster in terms of construction management and and contract administration. Uh it's a monster project in terms of scope and cost, noise, dust and inconvenience. And it will test the patience of some of our residents. In two thousand eleven, uh when I was first elected, the city suffered several large storm events that flooded the basements and ruined personal belongings. Uh for hundreds of our residents. Uh then in two thousand twenty one, we had more of the same flooding, which brought further insult to uh to hundreds more residents in our in our city. Now this council today is poised to do something that will help mitigate. Future uh basement and street flooding, despite the challenges that we all know we have. Uh we need to keep the goals of the project in mind, which are less basement and street flooding. Considerable reduction of combined sewer sewage dis- uh discharge to the city of Detroit. And fewer long term headaches for our residents. I've been a part of this solution uh to this problem for years now, I've met with our staff, with our engineers and reviewed various plans. I'm committed to the success, as you all seem to be. Success of this project because I know our professionals are. Uh in the end, while we can't pretend to say any uh that we cannot pretend to say the completion of this project will completely eliminate. Uh the risk of future flooding events, I'm quite sure our residents will be less vulnerable to the outrage. Uh and the insult and grief that accompanies um flooding events, so that's what I had to say about that. And thank you very much.
I just wanna add one comment about the ti- a lot of the timing on when we start this project. Unfortunately tied to the state's review and approval for the SRF funding applications. I think you saw it up there quickly, but these decisions won't be made by the state until later this year. And that funding will happen almost a year late. So some of the funds that we're going to expend in the hurdle process are funds that we, as hopefully good stewards of our citizens' money, have accumulated. In our water fund to at least start the process before we hear whether the state's gonna award us full, partial or none uh on the SRF application. We anticipate we'll probably have to bond some of this, uh but we hope to get as much of it through the state as possible. So a lot of the timing is depending on our application being considered and approved by the state of Michigan. We would like to start digging tomorrow, uh unfortunately, we're tied into that um process. And I I think I wanna echo what Lev said is uh it's it's. We are still part, no matter what we do in the farms, we're still part of a regional system. Flooding from almost three years ago now, June largely started, if not solely started, in Detroit. And it came back at us with a lot of force. Um this project will not guarantee that people's basements don't flood. And I have done my basement twice already. But it's 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 horrible, but we can't count on it, this is not, you know, fixable. We rely on Ghost Point Park, Donut Park, Ghost Point City, Dearborn, City of Detroit, everybody who partakes in Oakland County. Who partakes in the Great Lakes Water Authority has to do their part, so this is our part in that process. So I will initially, you know, right now beg for our citizens' patience, both in getting the process started. And once started, uh the disruption that will impact a large part of our community. Uh it's it's not going to be easy and we will be in it and dwell into two thousand twenty five. And twenty and to two thousand twenty six, I think, as well, so. Uh here we sit in two thousand twenty three, hopefully we're all back here in two thousand twenty six, popping a cork, having champagne, that's done. Burning the mortgage, as they say, and uh we'll have this done, so. Uh without any more comments from council, I'll open it to the public for any questions, Mr. Durbin, Vanna.
Um any of three or six questions? One of the concerns I have, whatever that was, I just signed up for the project Friday night, looking at the package. This is the biggest product I've done in twenty years and no one knows about it, no one's here. I mean, this is, I mean, disappointing, we spent forty million dollars plus interest. And we don't know about it, I mean, I know about it, but most people don't. This is not good, we should have done a better job getting the word out, well, it's gonna happen. I'm really disappointed. And maybe, maybe, I I don't know, but I mean, I, you guys did a great job, I mean, Jennifer, nice engineering job. It's kind of scary the numbers and it's kind of scary what's gonna cost on our water bills, forty five dollars potentially. That's sixty four percent increase. That's that's gonna really hurt a lot of people. I understand maybe there's some people helping, but we're a lot of concerned, that's a huge fight cost to this project and. You know, I'm I'm just getting estimates done, we build our basement after all the devastation. Um so I'm concerned, plus all the, what's it gonna cost? Do you think we can really get, how much we're gonna, what's the reality of getting this this SRF fund? I mean, I think it's not really good.
We're not planning it at all, but.
You can make it so.
But the nice thing is we're still uh triple A bond rated.
Right, right.
And we will continue to work hard physically to keep that on.
Yeah, I understand, but that's gonna.
Yes, it would be higher than two percent.
And we're gonna talk about forty millions lost. The SRF came through, that's for that one piece, the other piece, the other piece would be right with launch correct for that for that pumping supply.
All pieces, I understand, but it's it's not gonna be over. I mean, the one thing, I I was not a council, I ran, front of the projects completed, but I hardly cooperate, Shane, you were here. Even the the project done in nineteen ninety nine and nineteen eighty eight hours. Even the the project done in nineteen ninety nine and nineteen eighty eight, uh on the Lakeside District.
It was twenty million.
Twenty million dollars with no mechanicals, right? And it was literally just gravity taking water off the system and dividing the sewer system. So I I I guess it's an enormous amount of money, but I'm thinking thirty, you know, twenty three years later, that is double plus all the mechanical and everything. I'm kind of shocked that it's only around double because so many other things have doubled since two thousand nineteen ninety nine, nineteen ninety eight. Obviously, uh mostly everybody in the community sees that we have been good stewards with their money. And know that they're going, you know, we went through the process of deciding in twenty years. A lot of moves, as Shane said, we want to come up with the best solution that was that crazy in terms of expense. If we did the whole community two years ago, I think the number was about hundred forty thousand.
Hundred forty million. Hundred forty million dollars.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, so and today's dollars two years later, I can push it to about fifty.
And I have concern with inflation going on. This is a
Like I said, we'd like to start along. Thank you, Andy.
All right, Shane. Thanks.
Anybody else in the panel? Vanna, put your name and address, please.
Right, Ivan, uh three one three Maras. Um I've only been living in the city less than a year. Last few months are backyard has flooded. So it'd be nice to have all of that taken care of. My only concern is how, you said two years? Two to three years and then tear down Maras?
Well, we're not. That's that's the thing. Maras will be impacted somewhat, but the bulk of the construction will be through the golf course.
Okay.
Because that's one of the reasons why we want to go across is to try to limit the impact on Maras Road. Because there you're talking a four-foot pipe on Maras that doesn't have to go down there anymore because it's escalating over to the country.
Okay, I guess I didn't really see though.
Yeah, the purple is on the club.
Okay, so majority of Maras will not be done.
You don't, there's be some touching the malls all the way down. It's not, it's a storm source, but not a four-foot transmission line.
Okay, my only concern was the house being built across the street, you know, that with tearing on Maras, how much it will mess up. But this is my only, that's my only concern.
Like we said, that's that's one of the negative proportions. It's a lot of construction. I'm down Shell Farm, so it'll be good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So you had your hand up on the page, Mark.
My name is David Newhouse. I have two ninety, Mount Vernon. And uh first of all, I'd like to thank you for the presentation. It's certainly a lot easier going through it uh than trying to pick through the details online. Um I do admittedly have a bias. I live between Oak Prairie and Charleboy on Mount Vernon. But when looking at the figures in a previous scope a few months ago, we had no flooding on our block in the disastrous flood of twenty twenty one. And then in twenty sixteen, if you look at the, there was hardly any flooding in the city. Maybe there were fifteen or twenty homes affected. And on the uh south side of the street, there were homes on Mount Vernon. But then nothing since, which implied there was an unusual, unique situation that caused that blockage in twenty sixteen because no one else was flooding, just those six homes. But um the the other point I wanted to raise is on Mount Vernon, on that block, the sanitation line runs on the north side. Uh it runs through backyards over to uh Mulford. So we're not part of that sanitation system on Mount Vernon. So the question, uh and maybe it's a cost savings, why would that block of Mount Vernon be included in this scope? And uh when considering too, the the same block of McKinley between Charleboy and Oak Prairie is not included in the scope. So and they had far worse flooding than we did in twenty twenty one. So that's that's one point. Um cost savings potentially, obviously there's a bias because we're going to be inconvenienced. But if it's not heated, why why are we doing it? Why are we inconveniencing those those on that block? Um also, how will residents have access to their garages during this construction? Um I think not, but I'd like to hear it officially. And then for how long? It would, is it for the two two-year duration? Is it going to be construction done on a block-by-block basis, street-by-street? Or are we expected to park for maybe a four-four-month period of time, three-month period of time on Charleboy and Oak Prairie? So the and it's recognizing that there will be stages in construction. Then after construction, how will the streets be repaired? Will it be concrete? Will it be asphalt? If anybody has driven down Oak Prairie Southbound uh after it was duly paved, across from Kirby Road, there's a part that is dug up and the replacement asphalt is like an unintentional speed bump for right side of the car. Um so that that's a concern, how professional the the repave is is going to be. Then I did not see any mention of rodent mitigation in the documents. There's nothing indicating there's any budget towards rodents. And when construction happens, especially with sewer lines, the the rodents or or uh wildlife that live in the sewers are going to find other locations to dwell. And that's a concern because obviously garages are a concern or they could come into homes, but I didn't see anything addressing that that point. Um also, if if we're to park our vehicles on side streets, what patrols will be increased? Because every time we see the the Rose Point News or Rose Point Times, there's a catalytic converter being stolen out of St. John's. And it's not just St. John's, but we can't, we can't park our tires in the garage. That's assuming we won't have access to it. And finally, um will there be a community VA sign that we can ensure the residents for a quick response? Instead of leaving a voicemail at somebody's somebody's desk and not knowing when we get a reply, but that's another important. Thank you.
But sorry. I think it's a lot to respond to, but um like, you know, I I think there's a lot of details there that clearly is gonna involve uh additional meetings, communication with those residents that are to be impacted. Uh and we've we've done that before. We did that when we did sewer separation uh what we call the Lakeside District uh east of uh east of Ridge Road. And so um, you know, there, you know, there will be that process. Uh so I don't know, you know, it is, it'll be disruptive, but we would obviously work uh with the residents, uh keep them informed as we we move each step along the way. Um in terms of the VA's on, there will be names, there'll be names. Uh we will have a project manager who will be accessible, who will be on the street, be on the field, and will be of uh interest concerns as a riots.
Just one more point. I have to agree with communication, the issue that was brought up previously. The people that I spoke with, and I did not speak with a wide sample of my block that was on Mount Vernon, no one knew of this project. So whether they're not reading Rose Point News or, and we knew about it because my wife is very active looking at the notes of the city council meeting, so. And I sent out an email yesterday and the responses I got back is thanks for letting us know. We knew nothing about it.
Now, we again, we we this is a series of meetings, so we had a meeting when we did the original uh the project uh plan that uh that that had the different various scenarios. And then uh the basis of design was done at a separate meeting. Uh there was a public meeting and I think it did, you know, put a bit of trust in in that information. How has been included on our website, the homepage? This meeting is the first thing you you'll see when you click on the homepage of uh the city website. Uh is is uh this this informational meeting tonight and 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 opportunity for input. Uh it's not the last opportunity for input. Um we will definitely want it uh as we we move forward. Uh we we're gonna go into the next step, engineering phase, and 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 so uh additional input from residents is gonna be incredible. Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Seeing no more public comments, public comment is closed. Uh what is the pleasure of the council?
I have a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gullily. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move uh to adopt proposed resolution as provided in attachment two of our April ten meeting packets. Uh known as the project planning document for the inland district sewer separation project and designate the city manager as the authorized officer.
We're all ready to please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. I have another motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I move that pursuant to the completing of the uh request for qualifications, the IRP process that the city of Rose Point Farms award consulting, design and construction, engineering services as it relates to the inland district sewer separation project to Hubble, Roth and Clark.
For?
For.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Reposed?
Motion carries, Mr. Gullily.
And one final motion, Mr. Mayor, please. I move the city of Rose Point Farms award design engineering services to Hubble, Roth and Clark as stated in their proposal dated April ten, two thousand twenty three, and in an amount not to exceed two million eight hundred eighty-three thousand dollars.
To the board. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Other business, Mr. Reese Simon.
I have your other business.
Anybody have thoughts on other business?
Mr. Mayor, I just take a, I I do know uh communication concerns. And but while I think it wasn't publicized, it was public caring, I mean, you know, and and act actually, especially on our website. But um we're on a communications committee with the council and myself, and so if we're to honor our agenda, we could probably increase the communication in different modalities. Perhaps uh some other difficult ones might work out to help people any more time later.
Anybody else? All right, anybody in the public for public comment tonight? All right, seeing none. Music, sir. Thank you, everybody.